You just accepted the invite, too. We just thought it'd be a great, maybe for all of you and your students. Better than the prayer.
I let it call this July 28th County Council meeting to order, and I will ask if everyone will please rise. Councilman Crosby will lead us in invocation. He will remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Father God, thank you for this time of fellowship, Lord, for this day that you have made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. Holy Spirit, be welcome in this space. Fill our hearts. Guide us, lead us in a manner that's pleasing to you and worthy of your calling. Lord, for your glory and the good of this community that we serve. Thank you for this awesome opportunity. We love you, Lord Jesus. It's in your holy and precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And I'm going to, I want to announce, just so everybody is, you see six of us here. There are seven here because Mr. Smith is on the phone here with us tonight. So couldn't make it in, so he is dialed in. First item on the agenda is adoption of minutes from the July 14th, 2025 County Council meeting.
So moved.
There is a motion and several seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda is adoption of a proclamation number 2512, proclaiming August 2025 as National Emergency Management Awareness Month. And I will ask Councilwoman Rank if she will read that proclamation.
Sure. State of South Carolina, County of Dorchester, proclamation number 25-12, proclaiming August 2025 as Emergency Management Awareness Month in Dorchester County. Whereas National Emergency Management Awareness Month occurring for the first time this year creates an ideal opportunity for every resident of Dorchester County, South Carolina, to join citizens across the United States in recognizing all that emergency managers do to help their communities and organizations to prepare, respond, recover, and adapt to any type of emergency, including natural disasters and potential terrorist attacks. And whereas, emergency management brings partners together to solve complex problems, reduce harm, and restore stability during emergencies by planning in advance, coordinating under pressure, and developing lasting resilience. And whereas most people don't see emergency managers at work, they are the ones coordinating evacuations and emergency alerts, anticipating hazards, and mapping community vulnerabilities, securing resources and partnerships before disaster strikes, managing emergency operations centers and response coordination, and supporting recovery long after the headlines fade. And whereas, emergency managers turn strategy into action when it matters most. And whereas, emergency managers work for a variety of organizations across local, state, tribal, territorial, and federal governments, including school districts, colleges, and universities, hospitals and clinics, nonprofits, utilities, transit systems, and retailers. They ensure operations and critical services aren't interrupted by disaster. And whereas, emergency management is behind the scenes wherever you live, work, and play to protect lives, restore order, and lead the recovery during any disaster. Now therefore, be it resolved that Dorchester County Council hereby coclaims the month of August 2025 as National Emergency Management Awareness Month in Dorchester County, and encourages all residents of Dorchester County to thank the members of the Dorchester County Emergency Management Department by developing their own family emergency preparedness plan before the next disaster strikes. Adopted this 28th day of July 2025 by David Chin, his chairman, attest Lona R., Council Clerk to Council.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Where am I going to start?
Any discussion?
I can't believe nobody's going to say anything.
You waiting on me?
Yes. So I will, you know, realize I get, I'm the last one. So that's the, I, this is one of those things that the unsung hero is probably, heroes are probably the, doesn't even address that properly because nobody probably even realized these guys go to work every day and do what they do. They are that important to what happens every day. When you plan for an emergency, and some people may not believe this, but when they plan for these emergencies, they are planned for years in advance. The estimation of what will happen and how to address that doesn't stop. What's next doesn't stop. So these guys are constantly looking out at what is happening, what may happen, and what can happen, and trying to prepare for that unknown as best we can. So it's more than appropriate, and especially in August or in July and August, as we get into the hurricane season that we recognize, July as the Emergency Management Awareness Month. And I'm going to ask Tom and his staff that I see sitting in the back, if they will meet us down, we're going to present you with this. We'll give you a standing round ovation here before we meet you up there. But if you'll meet us at the podium after I take this vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, motion, that motion canceled hurricane season.
Yeah, thanks.
No, we cannot, we cannot make that motion.
No.
I need it for the stock price to go.
Oh, gosh.
We are having a hurricane the second week in September.
Just don't have it the first week, last weekend of August. We're okay. Next item on the agenda is request to address council. I have one, one person who has signed up, Mr. Ben Markberg. If you will come to the podium and state your name and address.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. Tennis and Council. Stand before you today. Few members of the Dorchester County Air Knox Board like to formally request, if we can, set up a meeting to be able to discuss the hanger leases. As you may or may not be aware, they are a 30-year lease. We've known for some time now that they are going to be expiring. We've been asking for over a year now to actually discuss that and be able to plan for what's next. Unfortunately, the airport community's been lacking that communication. So we'd like to formally request it to be added to the agenda to discuss the hanger leases and understand some good timelines on when do we expect the leases to be discussed.
Mr. Markberg, I responded to your email today, just to let you know, and I'll reiterate this last statement, as council and staff has been discussing this for several weeks, and hopefully we will have something before, in the next few weeks that we will address. Because those leases are with the county and they're contractual in nature, it'll happen between county council and the attorneys. We will make sure you guys at least know when we get to where we're going, where that direction is. But soon as we get there, we'll let you know for certain. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and Council, I'm glad to announce that Dorchester County is the recipient of a $1 million Community Development Block Grant for the Stratton Capers Water Upgrade Phase Two Project. This project is providing, excuse me, the county is providing $161,500 in match for that million dollars. The grant and the local match will support an overall project that includes replacing two-inch water lines with approximately 2,500 linear feet of eight-inch water lines, and will include the construction of four new fire hydrants where there are currently no hydrants within that project area. In terms of the impact, 123 existing residents, as well as 53 occupied dwellings will be supported by this. And this was received as a part of a competitive process. We're one of nine communities that receive funding through the South Carolina Department of Commerce.
Thank you. Appreciate staff's work and council's work from that standpoint in getting out that, getting those. That's not one of those things that just happens without a whole lot of work and a whole lot of time, a whole lot of shoe leather on the street to make certain that those things actually put us at the top of that competitive grant operation, opportunity. So thank you very much for everything you guys have done. No question.
Apologize. I should have said this was one of the priorities identified in the county community needs assessment that was adopted by county council and in one of the areas that has one of the highest percentages of low to moderate income within our county at over 80%.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right. Next item on the agenda, our guests. And I have one of the other cornerstones and bedrock of emergency management and emergency, making certain that people know what's happening, when it's happening. And I'm going to ask if Cora will come to the front and give us an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members, for having me here. I'm very pleased to provide y'all with an update of Consolidated Dispatch five years later. For operations and coordination, in the five years we have been operating under the county, we have closed the gap on staffing challenges, starting in late 2023. We now currently have two openings in dispatch. We are above minimal staffing and have been since 2023. This has allowed for telecommunicators to be able to take their leave, vacations, and it has very much created a positive culture within the dispatch center. We created a ladder program for career advancement. In 2020, excuse me, in 2020, when we became, under the county, we had two positions in Consolidated Dispatch, other than the management. We had a telecommunicator and a senior telecommunicator. The past five years, to give telecommunicators some room to grow and expand their abilities, we created emergency call taker. They only answer the phone calls for dispatch, which takes some stress off of the telecommunicators who can focus on the radio aspect. We created a telecommunicator. We created a senior telecommunicator, and then a shift supervisor. So we now have four positions instead of just two. This past budget year, we created a communication technician position. This is to assist with IT in radio and mapping and CAB related incidents that often occur, and to have someone on site to readily be there to fix whatever issue it may be, is going to be another positive step for the Consolidated Dispatch Center. One of, one of our proudest moments is creating the Consolidated Dispatch Advisory Committee, which is compromise of our main stakeholders. We have someone present from the Sheriff's Office, Fire, EMS, Emergency Management, NIT, GIS, and all our municipalities. Every quarter, we get together and have a discussion on ways we can all work together to improve our joint responses. Sometimes it's mapping, sometimes it's updating our first due, but every quarter, we work together to provide a better consolidated dispatch for the public safety units. Five years of call processing data, I'm not going to read all these out. You can see it's a lot. The calls processed are actually the number of calls the dispatcher inputs into the CAD. So it can be calls for service, traffic stops, residence checks, but all of those get catted into the CAD. So then we call those calls processed. And then we have our 911 calls over the past five years, 305,000, and our non-emergency, 704. So they're pretty busy in the dispatch center. We've improved our training, the training enhancements, excuse me, we've promoted continued education through the new training program. With that being said, our training manager, Mr. Thomas Wolf, has put together a chart, a trackable history of training hours. The dispatchers have to meet certain training hours to be promoted from one job to the next. We have right now seven communication training officers certified through the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials, which is APCO. They are trained to, they have a certification to train our new employees. Right now, we have seven, back in 2020, we didn't have any. Now we have seven, and we have four more going to the certification class in two months. That will give us 11. We have six of our supervisors that are certified by the National Emergency Number Association, which is NINA, in the 911 Center Supervisor Program. That is a program that we want our supervisors to attend so they can progress to moving up and forward into other management positions. We have six of those that are certified right now. Of course, as always, they certify in EMD and CPR and NCIC every two years. We are, this is our first ever that our center is going to be hosting in December 2025, a class, a CTO class, Certified Training Officer class, for other dispatch centers throughout the state of South Carolina and any other local states that may want to go. As we put the class on our NINA website, and we reached out to all the counties in South Carolina to see if they want to come, we'll be hosting that class in December 2025, which is our first ever class hosting as a dispatch center. Our call processing standards, NINA, which is the National Number Emergency Association, is a basis for every dispatch center to guide us in the standard throughout the nation of 911 answer times. And the standard says, within 20 seconds, the center has to answer their calls 15% of the time. Within, I'm sorry, let me, let me back that up. 15%, 95% of the time, we have to answer our 911 calls within 20 seconds. 90% of the time, we have to answer our 911 calls in 20 seconds. Back in 2020, we were doing it at 92 to 97. Now we're all the way up to 98 and 99. That is mostly attributed to the emergency call taker position that we have created, which again, I say, takes stress off of the telecommunicators. So they are well above the national standard. Our ProQA standard for processing emergency medical calls. ProQA is the agency performance benchmark, which is established by the International Academies of Emergency Dispatch Accreditation Center of Excellence. We've increased our compliance level. Back from 2020, we were at 25%. We are now currently up to 85% compliant. Our key question compliance, which are four main questions we have to ask on every emergency medical call, we've increased from 87 to 97%. And our determinant score compliance, which is the, we get a determinant score, it can be Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, or Delta, or Echo. That is the response time that ambulance are going to respond to the calls in. From either they're going to go non lights and sirens, or they're going to go lights and siren, dependent on the determinant code the dispatch center achieves. And we are constantly in the 95 to 100 percentile in answering, in determining the determinant code correctly. The last three months, I think, out of 50 calls, we missed at one time. Program highlights. These past five years, we completed a CAD conversion to Southern Software in April of 2023. We moved to the state-of-the-art center in May of 2024, which is a beautiful center, and has helped the culture and the resilience of our dispatchers. They love to have this center. It's amazing. We implemented full implementation of the Purvis Fire Station Alerting System, which is a computer-based system. When we, the dispatcher no longer has to actually physically dispatch the fire or EMS unit. It is a computer that comes across and dispatches them automatically. So that is cut down on the time it takes to get the dispatcher to call up and then dispatch it out, because we can automatically just drop them on it and it goes while the call taker's still on the phone. We upgraded just recently in May, our Viper Call Handling Equipment and State of Emergency Services IP Network Mitigation to the next generation 911 technology, which has gone from, makes us go from analog 911 calls to digital. That is important because before, when we lost 911 services, we would have to call and get our number rerouted, which could take up to an hour. Now it just automatically reroutes. So there's no delay and loss of 911 services. And we have also improved mission effectiveness with Alastar. Alastar is, increases situational awareness in the tri-county. Right now, we can see all of our units, police, fire, EMS. We can see all of Charleston County units. So we can know what calls they're on, what calls we're on, what calls we're working together. We can work on starting to get, if they need mutual aid, we know where we're going. We're soon to bring on Berkeley County. Transitioning into the future, we are developing our strategic plan for Consolidated Dispatch. We want, we are going to look to have that completed by December of 2025. We are prioritizing CAD-to-CAD implementation with our local PS apps, Somerville, Charleston, Berkeley. We're trying, we're underway with Charleston right now. This will allow us, instead of having to call the center and transfer a 911 call, the other center can look and see where it is and know, we can just say, we need help. This is where it is. We see where you're at. We are starting the process for ACE, which is Accredited Center of Excellence. That's accreditation for the International Academies of Medical Emergency Dispatch. And the last thing is, we are starting program and requirements for Kalia. That is the Commission on Accreditation Law Enforcement Agencies. So we have two accreditation that dispatch can obtain, one for medical calls and one for law enforcement calls. The Kalia is interesting. There are only nine PS apps in the state of South Carolina that are Kalia certified. And so we're hoping to be that 10th one. Any questions?
I've got a question. You guys are doing an excellent job, and we're proud of you. Can't, can't say enough about what you guys are doing over there. I noticed on the All-Star, is that how, the new computer system, Alastar?
Alastar.
Alastar. You mentioned Charleston and Berkeley County. You did mention Somerville, the town of Somerville.
We're still working with Somerville to get their units on board.
The systems will match up?
Mm-hmm. Alastar, Alastar is a separate web-based system. It's not CAD-to-CAD. What it is, everybody that has the Alastar system can go in with your login and see the local area and what units are on the call. You can see, you can see DOT cameras. So if Somerville's units are loaded, we can see where their fire engines are.
Are they going, are they going to use that new system in their new $61 million?
Somerville, we've provided Somerville with an account to Alastar from the county's account. So they have very, very limited access. But for us to leverage Alastar to exchange information day to day, to be able to see all the units, it will require them to purchase their own subscription to Alastar.
So we're basically, we've got a better working relationship with Charleston, Berkeley, than we do our own major city in our county?
Well, dispatch, we have a very good working, working relationship with Somerville. Faith and I, who's their communication manager, Portia. The Kalia is interesting, there are only nine PSAPs in the state of South Carolina that are Kalia certified. And so we're hoping to be that tenth one. Any questions?
I've got a question. You guys are doing an excellent job, and we're proud of you. Can't, can't say enough about what you guys are doing over there. I noticed on the All-Star, is that how, the, the new computer system, Alistar?
Alistar.
Alistar. You mentioned Charleston and Berkeley County, you did mention Somerville, the town of Somerville.
We're still working with Somerville to get their units on board.
The systems will match up?
Alistar, Alistar is a separate web-based system, it's not CAD-to-CAD. What it is, everybody that has the Alistar system can go in with your login and see the local area and what units are on the call. You can see, you can see DOT cameras. So if Somerville's units are loaded, we can see where their fire engines are.
Are they going, are they going to use that new system in their new sixty-one million dollars?
Somerville, we've, we've provided Somerville with an account to Alistar from the county's account, so they have very, very limited access. But for us to leverage Alistar to exchange information day to day, to be able to see all the units, it will require them to purchase their own subscription to Alistar.
So we're, we're basically, we've got a better working relationship with Charleston, Berkeley than we do our own major city in our county?
With dispatch, we have a very good working, working relationship with Somerville. Faith and I, who's their communication manager, Portia, is our operations supervisor. Her and Faith work together to monitor, to create plans together. We have automatic aid with Somerville, we, we provide it for them, they provide it for us for fire. The law enforcement agencies work well together, it's just getting them on board to buy this type of equipment.
Okay.
We're continuing to work, you know, through technology to bridge some of the gap in exchanging information and making best use of our resources. And they are moving in a new direction as it relates to the computer-aided dispatch, and they're going to leverage a, a piece of technology that we have called Rave to exchange CAD information. But Cora mentioned that we were working with Charleston County for a CAD-to-CAD solution. And so Charleston County was awarded USD DOT funding about a year ago. For a project to, to basically connect CADs between Berkeley, Charleston, and Dorchester. So that's, that's on the horizon, but ensuring that we have, you know, efficient and effective communication with the town of Somerville, you know, continues to be a top priority for us.
Mr. Chairman, just join in with Councilman Fredl to congratulate you for improving all the metrics, that's very impressive. So you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, again echoing the, the sentiment, thank you guys and all the emergency management folks, tremendous work. Just a couple of questions right there, that last slide, you had mentioned ACE, and then I didn't catch the other acronym. Kalia. In terms of pipeline and building that, are you, what is the eligibility age requirement? And/or, you know, certification, diploma, meaning, is there any type of pipeline in terms of CTE courses in the local high schools that could help funnel, you know, and build your pipeline so that you're raising up the next group of emergency management leaders?
Right, I, I understand that. The accreditation is not on the certifications that dispatchers already have, that is a part of it, but most of it is the process the dispatch center goes through.
Got it, current employees.
Yes. I will tell you that Kane Bay High School.
I saw that.
Even though they're in Berkeley County, they have programs, but we work with the Sheriff's Office. Their recruiter, recruiter, their recruiter is, I think is Corporal McKee. Kane Bay works with him on their public safety classes, and they come in and they have toured our center three times. And we have gotten several requests for the students to come sit in and watch and learn how a dispatch center works. So we are continuing to work with them.
Well, I don't see anybody from economic development, but there'd be a great collaboration for our STEAM initiative.
Right.
With Dorchester County Economic Development, working with the CTE teachers in the respective counties to help drive some of that. So, thank you, that was awesome, I appreciate it.
Cora, fantastic presentation. You did a great job of using plain speech. Only thing I didn't know what it was, was PSAP, what is that?
Public Safety Answering Point.
Very good.
He's kidding.
Just wanted to make sure I knew what it was.
So I, I, I know that a number of years ago, there, there, there was some real concern from the standpoint of staff when we, when the county made a determination to pull dispatch into the county. And I hope where we are today, not only from your side, but from everyone else's side, prove the commitment that we, we put into that, so.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering, maybe the results are getting better because the dispatchers are literally not sitting on top of each other.
Or having rain on their head is the other one. Or having the administrator on the roof during a hurricane. That may have happened as well. Just none of our risk management people are here that heard that, I don't think. In any case, thank you very much, appreciate everything that you and all of your group does, couldn't do it without you, couldn't, couldn't get there, thank you.
We appreciate it.
All right, next item on the agenda is Mr. Chris Rollison, the Inter-Agency Coordinator for Dorchester Alcohol and Drug Commission, and he's going to give us an update on the opioid abatement program, and I'm going to stop right there and let you finish the rest of it.
Good afternoon, thank you for this opportunity, I'm both excited and appreciative for the opportunity to talk about kind of what we've done and, and kind of foreshadow a little bit what our plans are in the future. So thank you for that opportunity. Before I start, I'd love to, I am the Inter-Agency Coordinator, but what makes my job possible is an awesome relationship with Dorchester County, specifically Mario's support and also my executive director, Sammy Miller. So that, that partnership is really, I think, I don't want to say open doors, but made sure that there was no barriers in place to make sure that we have the progress that we have to date, so I appreciate that. So yeah, the opioid task force, this time last year, we, I was in front of y'all talking about our strategic plan process and asked for your support for the strategic plan. Since then, that work group, if you will, that helped work on the strategic plan, a lot of them stayed on board for the strategic, I mean, the opioid task force. We meet, I almost said by, I don't know, every other month, that's the easiest way for me to say, every other month. And the, the, the big purpose of that, you can read there, but is to hold us accountable and to see where we are, make sure we still have momentum going to achieve the goals and objectives laid forth in that strategic plan. I think we as a community are extremely, as a county are extremely fortunate that we have the support as you see above. I mean, those tend, those meetings are well attended, there's good input. You know, the biggest fear is that I'm just talking, giving an update, but the conjecture and the discussion during those are fruitful, and I think it's helping move our progress forward as a, as a county. So thank everybody here that's part of that group right there. I don't know how to advance the slide. What do I do? Oh, like, like every other computer, I got it. Sorry about that. Some of our projects that requested funding for, from the scoreboard is a continuing funding of the Inter-Agency Coordinator, thank you. The Critical Accident Management System, the Detention Center Health Services, the Randocs Multi-Stat Device, the Community Paramedic Program, super excited about that opportunity, overdose death coordinator in the Lead Behind Program. I'm going to talk a little bit about more of those, and I can tell you that, but does anybody have questions about any of those specifically? All right. And at the end, if, if you want, you know, obviously I can answer any questions. But what's really exciting about what's going forward, and a lot of this time was planning, but now we've requested resources from the scoreboard to kind of stand up this community overdose response plan. What we know now, especially coordinating, I've held probably five meetings with first responders throughout the county, and big thank you to emergency services, Mr. Watts, Mr. Crowder, because they've, they've kind of taken the lead, or they will be taking the lead, this is all planning and we're getting there now, on the Lead Behind Program. So we, we anticipate that about ninety-five percent of all overdoses will be responded to by EMS. There will be incidents where people take them directly to the emergency room. Luckily, Somerville Medical Center is part of this Lead Behind Program too, they're at the table. So at any overdose, we're going to leave behind resources for that person, family. If that person's transported, we're going to leave it behind, because everybody's at risk in that scenario. So everybody in that environment where the overdose is taking place will be offered just a community, a list of community resources, including Narcan and other support systems. So that'll be physically left behind. The other prong of that is our peer support outreach. That is peer support, our people specifically trained, they're in long-term recovery, they can speak to a level that, that, that I can't myself and others who have not been in, that have not had substance abuse disorders. So they can speak to them, so they'll call out right now. We're doing that with the Dorchester Alcohol and Drug Commission, but we're looking to enhance that and work with other people. So somebody, a peer is reaching out to them and offering support. The other part of that, which I'll talk about a little bit more too, is our community paramedic. So that community paramedic is an awesome opportunity, and they may or may not be in the building today, so that's awesome that they're here. That community paramedic is going to be able to actually go and visit and offer, all of these things are offered, right? They can, but all of these opportunities are offered, but they're going to be able to go out and visit and take services to that person, specifically medical services as well. So that's really exciting, and all of this is kind of managed and operated through the Critical Incident Management System, which is a database that helps input everything. And because Cora was just here, I want to give a big shout out to Cora, because the SIMS, I don't even know where I am, there it is. All right. The SIMS is a software that's not unique to Dorchester County, Charleston's been doing it a few years, it's out of New England. What is unique to Dorchester County is the Consolidated Dispatch is on board, and they're able to put in, I mean, as soon as they get the report, they're able to upload all the information into SIMS. And I can tell you that we're being looked at through the developers of this and how this works in other communities. And Mario had a great idea too, because if you identify one person in a law enforcement agency, what if that person go vacation to upload the information? What if they're not on their shift, what if it's the weekend? So the dispatch, to my knowledge, is always twenty-four, seven. So we've worked around some things, and they've just been a great supporter, I want to give them a lot of props to, to thank them for, for being willing to take this on too. And, and yes, I, I appreciate the, the, the help and support that they're providing. But yeah, all of this is managed through that Critical Incident Management System. Charleston has it now, and we're working on a data sharing agreement, so they can see all of our data, because especially in the tri-county area, we're very unique, where incidences, behaviors don't care about boundaries. They don't care about borders, or, so we need to be able to communicate with each other. Quarterly, I participate in a tri-county overdose fatality review, where we talk about an incident which could be, the fatality happened in Berkeley County, but they were living in Dorchester County, but arrested or using, you know, so it's important that we communicate, so Berkeley's applying for this, the same, for the same management system, hopefully we can all talk together, so. The Lead Behind Project, talked a lot about that, I've worked with, so the fire departments, both county and Somerville Fire Departments, Somerville Medical Center and EMS, and it's just a resource we've agreed upon, this is the resource we're going to leave behind. So at least we know at any incident, any overdose that they've, we can at least know the baseline of what information they were offered. Talked about the peer support, peer support involves individuals with shared experience, providing knowledge, experience, emotional, social, and practical assistance to one another. And I talked about the community paramedic, which is an awesome program there. The community paramedic will develop plans and procedures to administer overdose follow-up visits with patients, families, friends, and assist with resource coordination and referrals to services from DADC and organization providing support. Other projects that we have funded that's, that have been, that have happened, some drug detection devices for law enforcement. I like to highlight this one, because when we came up with our strategic plan, I didn't want to be bound by just the SCORE funds. It's nice to have those resources in place, we're very appreciative, we're very lucky as a community, but that's one that fell outside. We actually, we actually applied and got rejected, no, we kind of anticipated that, but Mario and his group, we were able to figure out how to get those devices for law enforcement. So I just wanted to demonstrate that we weren't just bound by one specific funding source or resource source. And I keep trying to, like, we can, we can go out, we can write grants and other things too. So that's, that's a pretty cool thing that happened. Safe medication disposal devices, we purchased many of those, safe medication storage campaigns, creation of overdose fatality review board. This is really exciting for me, big help from the coroner's office, Mr. Brothers and his group there. We had our first one last Wednesday, that's when we, oh, I thought I, thought I did a little blurb on that, I didn't. But we take a case, an overdose in Dorchester County, and we want to look at the whole picture. The first thing we do is get permission from the family to be respectful of that family. And we also want to get a, we interviewed that family, the coroner's office did this, interview the family, because we want all the good stuff about the person. Because next, we're going to talk about all of the interactions, which are generally negative interactions. We're trying to, it's not to place blame, it's to say, hey, where in these interactions were missed opportunities? So this might not happen again. Families are extremely appreciative of this. I've been fortunate enough with SCORE funds to go to, I was out in Portland, learned a lot about this process, so I, I have training on that. I was out in, just Tennessee, so I've been able to go and get national training and learn from national peers on how to do that. We had our last one, first one, last Wednesday, and I think it was very fruitful, and it's going to benefit our community immensely. And we plan on doing that every three months, as well as I continue to participate in that tri-county one. Same purpose, but one that has interactions with all three counties. So that's, that's exciting for our community and myself. Want to celebrate a little bit? Before I talk about this one, I just looked this up, from February twenty-four to February twenty-five nationally, we've seen about a twenty, a twenty-six percent decrease in all overdose fatalities. And in South Carolina, that was thirty, thirty-one percent, I think a thirty-one percent decrease. So that should be celebrated, there's a lot of reason why that's happening. But here specifically, I was looking through some data, so ODMAP is a, is a national database that, that we put in. Luckily, a lot of that information gets pulled with a data sharing agreement, the Nemesis data right from EMS, so that gets inputted. I'm always checking it with Mr. Brothers and the coroner's office to make sure it's accurate. But you can see there, from, you know, January one through July, June thirtieth, last two years, we were at twenty-four, twenty-five fatalities. This year we're eight, I'll tell you, to the year to date, to this date, there's nine fatalities, which is still, it's way too many. Like, I want to be very clear about that, but that's also a big progress right there. And I don't think, a lot of people say, what do you attribute that to? There's a lot of factors, there's a lot of coordination, collaboration, national stuff, local stuff we're doing, but whatever the reason is, we should be celebrating that our fatalities are down, so. Yeah, I should have had that slide that says questions, forgive me for that.
Mr. Chairman. Chris, thank you for what you guys do, it's an incredibly valuable service. Sammy, I, I, you're, there you are, hey, good to see you as always, and, and you have done a consistently good job and really just keep up the good work, so thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Chris, you guys, I mean, ultimately, what would be great is if you work yourself out of a job, right? And just the work, just seeing that, you know, from the front row, so to speak, you guys, because folks don't really understand that the crisis is right here in their backyard. And you, you guys raising awareness and then meeting the need and tackling it head-on, not shying away from it. It's tremendous asset, along with, you know, all the collaborative groups, Mario, that you got for emergency management. Hats off to you guys, thank y'all very much.
Mr. Chairman, I, I really appreciate the mission and the staff and the team and what y'all do. I mean, coming from a, a family where, in my teens, my father was a substance abuser and struggled with that, it's nice to see families have resources to be able to turn to, to be able to get through that without having to hit rock bottom. So thank you for what you do, because you make a difference in, in our community and in families, so thank you.
Anyone else, I, I want to, I, I would be remiss of not thanking you, and, and again, pointing out the collaboration. I think we talked about that earlier from a standpoint of collaboration, and it goes deeper than that, and it goes further back than, than that, and it goes across the county, and it's one of the things that we probably do a horrible job at communicating, or people just aren't interested in hearing the good side, the good stories from all that. You, you talked about the nearly half a million dollars for, for the Inter-Agency Coordinator position. Jason talked earlier about the million-dollar CDB grant. We probably didn't talk, I know we didn't talk today about the twenty-four million dollars from the state on Highway seventy-eight, and you start looking at those things, looking at some of the chances that council has taken and taken the heat for. And sometimes, maybe rightly so, and sometimes hoping for the best with things like, again, moving 911 differently, moving Dorchester County alcohol and substance abuse from this building into its own building in the medical district as opposed to away from it. Those things, again, didn't come out pain at times, and, and certainly that risk, we, we've gambled well, but we haven't done it without your support and with staff paying attention to what we're doing, so. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Appreciate your time.
Mr. Chairman, I'll tell you what, Sammy, I'm gonna, tell us, please, while, take advantage of this opportunity, how many years do you have at Dorchester County now?
Thank you, sir. One more question, Sammy, how much are you benching now? Let's do that on YouTube, we'll get Aaron to come.
And, Mr. Chairman, seriously, you, you said something that was, it's funny, I even wrote it down, we, we were tracking on this, and just, we'll make a bigger point here. You're right, we don't, as a county, do a good enough job of pointing out the successes. And, you know, just tonight, you know, we've heard from emergency management and dispatch, they're, of course, in new facilities. We've heard from alcohol and drug, they're in new facilities. You know, the DSS is, you know, their offices are in new facilities, I'm going to forget one. Coroner's Office is coming up.
We, we broke ground on a new fire EMS station in Summers Corner, a joint venture with MUFC in St. George. in St. George.
And, you know, these are all, you know, vital services that, you know, it just, we're not just sitting still, we're not, you know, forgetting about the needs, the population growth, all these things are happening, you know, we're responding to it, but we should all be very proud, both as a county, as a council, Mr. Ward, administrative staff, Mario, I mean, there are tons of folks here, you know, that have done a fantastic job. And it's, it's good to hear this. I mean, this is good news.
And it was, without getting too deeply into this, Cory got out of here just now, but it was interesting if, and I'm going to take a little bit of liberty here, she talked about alpha through echo, which are basically the call severity. Is that a fair sort of?
It's the level of acuity.
Level of acute, from, from that standpoint. And I had a conversation with somebody one time when we were talking about, well, there's, there's not, nobody here and you can't respond fast enough. We can tell you how fast they respond because that's tracked. We know. She was able to give those numbers because that's tracked every day. We can't do it without the support of the community. We can't do it out of the great staff, but we can tell you where we need things. And there are places where we still need things. There's no question about it, but ultimately, trying to address that need. I'm going to take a little bit of liberty and say, on August 14th, if you're around, drive down about 9:00, 9:30 in the morning, drive down Miles Jamison Road and meet us for the ribbon cutting of the next Dorchester County Park, right there off the roundabout, which is something that I was remiss from. And again, that doesn't happen without the voters saying, we think this is important. So, thank y'all as well as everybody else. All right, Mr. Ward, I think you have one thing for us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, whenever we go before and receive SCORE Board approval, it still requires action by county council to utilize funds. So we have before you a motion for you to allocate $446,325 in SCORE Board funds for the following purposes. Continuation of the inter-agency coordinator position, medication assistant treatment and counseling services for the detention center, initiating the community paramedic program, assembling the leave behind kits that we mentioned, annual maintenance for the coroner's rapid toxicology machine, which was purchased with the SCORE funds. And then finally, our annual subscription for the critical incident management system that was mentioned as well. So we ask for your approval of acceptance and utilization of those funds.
Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. The next item on the agenda, we have our report, our presentation of our reports. We, and first, we're going to have the always merry Ms. Denise Christmas, followed by the outstanding Adam Davis, the ever bright Ms. Sunshine Tracus, and finally, by the always happy Mr. Larry Harper.
There you go.
Like that?
I like that.
Production value.
So, Merry Christmas and hey, Sunshine. Okay, so, maybe I won't need my reading glasses tonight after I had eye surgery. Okay, so, here we are at year end. We made it, another year, another fiscal year. So, this will be the final monthly report for fiscal year 2025. Yay. So for the general fund, we are standing at 99.9% of revenue collected through June 30th. And I'm happy to say that as of today, we have hit 100%. So, yay!
That's right.
This is general fund. So, regarding our revenues, so our charges for services, I just want to highlight that one in particular. So, charges for services there, our collections year to date are $14.1 million. We budgeted for $14 million. I just want to let you know that that includes register of deed, like marriage licenses, all the charges for services that we have in the county, probate fees and whatnot. So, of that, EMS charges for services make up 39% of that year-to-date amount. Just wanted to highlight that for you. Expenditures are under budget at 91%. We have not yet posted our payroll accrual, which consists of several days in the fiscal year 2025. So once that posts, that number will change slightly, but I still do not think that we will hit our 100% mark. I still think we're going to be under budget on our expenditure side. So that's the general fund, and we are projecting an increase in fund balance right now. Can't say how much because that always ruins it. That always, you know, something will happen, so we're just going to, okay. So, library funds, we'll move on to that one next. So they've received 95.6% of their budgeted revenues, and we have expended 88.5%. So, under budget there. Our capital fund, we have received 60.3% of our budgeted revenues and we have expended 99 point, no, 62.3%. The, and I'll tell you why that looks so low as we're 100% through the year, right? Because I'm sure someone wants to know the answer to that. Bill, okay. So, at the top in the revenues, we balanced our budget for fiscal year 2025 with use of fund balance. So that use of fund balance counts for, hmm, it looks like a little over 50% of our budget. So we want, we will not receive 100% of revenue because you don't receive fund balance, it's already there. So, but if you look at the lines, our taxes and the interest line item and other financing sources that we budgeted for, the only one that's not at 100% is the taxes, but we're really close and I'm sure we're going to be over 100% by the time we do a hard close on our books. So, we've received all of our revenue, the budgeted part of that revenue for the capital fund. So we're under budget on our expenditures because, as you know, this is the capital fund and we have projects that are underway that are not, you know, fully expended what we budgeted them. What we budgeted to expend on the projects have not been fully expended yet. Okay, so we'll move along to the fire fund. So the fire fund has received 100% of their revenue this year, and they've expended 92.7%. The water and sewer fund has collected 95.6 in revenue and has expended 62.1%. At the very top of this page for the revenue, the intergovernmental revenue did not have a budget, but we've received $2,945,000 in that line item, and that is for an RIA grant that we received earlier this year for the, is it I-95 to Highway 15 or 195 to Highway 15?
It's 178. So it's 95 down 178.
95, okay. Because I was confused in the system. Okay, so that's for that grant. So they are under budget, the water department is, as far as their expenses go. So the water and sewer impact fee fund, we have collected 137.6% in revenue and have expended 20.5%. The stormwater fund has received 51% of its revenue and has expended 55.9%. Now, again, Bill's going to want to know why we haven't received 100% of our revenue. Again, we budgeted to use fund balance, and that fund balance makes up 51.9% of the total budget. So, we have received all of the revenue, 100% of the revenue that we budgeted for. And we're still booking some until the end of August. The solid waste fund, we've received 81.2% of revenue and we've expensed 62.6%. So, and again, use of fund balance was there at 17.7% of that budget. So, we have collected all of our budgeted revenue in that fund as well. And last is ARPA. So our ARPA report for the month of June has us with a remaining available balance of $3,255,121. And as you know, that has to be expensed before December 31st, 2026. So we should have three projects remaining in ARPA that are not yet completed. Any questions?
Any of the ARPA money uncommitted? It's spoken for, correct?
It's already, yes, sir.
Okay. We may have some more coming.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I said this, and there may actually be a little bit more ARPA funds that are available for us that were not expended from the state level, so. No complaints. You'll be all right with that.
Okay, good. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Who's next?
The man of many hats.
This week. All right, good evening, Chairman Chen, members of council, Mr. Ward. The first project you have in front of you tonight is the mixed-use development of 500 North Main Street. As you're aware, the county affirming they're continuing to work towards approval with the town of Somerville. Town council had held their first meeting to remove the site from the historic district on July the 10th, which was unanimously approved. Planning commission meeting will be held on August the 18th for a recommendation of second reading to town council to consider during their September 11th town council meeting. So hopefully, moving forward on that. The coroner's office, TUCO is continuing the site work there. The building pad is scheduled to be poured the second week of August and building materials arriving near the end of the month. Oakbrook Sports Complex groundbreaking will be held at the end of August. We've been continually, continue to work with the YMCA to map out their programming so we can work around construction. And it is finalizing their mobilization plan so we can have a project schedule. Pine Trace, we're currently outfitting the park with furnishings and equipment. Some of that have came in today as far as appliances. Furniture came in last week, so we're almost there with the anticipation of the ribbon cutting on August the 14th. Healthcare facility in St. George, county staff, the architect, contractor, and USDA, we held our first construction meeting July 16th. That went well. Most of the demo has been completed. Plumbing rough-in is underway, and the project currently shows a completion date of December. Station Eight, Fire Station in Ridgeville, we anticipate having a cost proposal for that renovation project in front of us this week. Somerville Library, the county submitted a voluntary cleanup application that is currently under review with DES, Mr. Ward, that is the Department of Environmental Services, pending approval. TerraCon will then complete the appropriate documentation to enter the property into the voluntary cleanup contract. Summers Corner Fire and EMS, Lenora has agreed to the cost sharing and the calculations of the easement agreements. Design build is currently working on the mobilization schedule for construction to commence, and I have a owner, architect, contractor meeting tomorrow, and nobody's more excited to get this going than me and Mr. Frampton, so hopefully, we can get this going. Ridgeville Library, we've had some site exploration with some contractors and some architects work through that this, this month. We hope to have a design professional under contract in the next 30 to 45 days to start what that project looks like. The Veterans Facility, SMHA, the architect provided schematic design for review, for county review last week. I've already provided comments back to the architect. We're currently vetting civil work with ADC and ready to get that moving as well, so close to kicking that one off. Any comments, feedback, questions you all have?
I just, I wanted, I'm going to reiterate, I think I heard you say Somerville Library, which I know a lot of people think, well, we've opened up a couple libraries. We did in Nor Charleston, we did in the Ashley River Library. Somerville Library is the, is one of four that we had actually, the voters approved from that standpoint of getting started. Ridgeville Library is, is one that I've heard, you know, and it's funny because I've heard, where is it? Where is it? Well, it's, we've been working on it. It's, it's one of those things that takes a little bit of time to go through, but that one is actually there. Or something else you said that I, that made me, oh, that, it's probably my fault a little bit on the fire station, but I certainly appreciate that I looked into it and it ended up with a little bit more contribution from the developer on the stuff they asked for. So I'm not sorry for that part of it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Ward, Mr. Chairman, members of council, and Madam Clerk of Council. Our first spend, Road and Rice Mill Drive, the final design and permitting are nearing completion, and we have executed an agreement and received our notice to proceed from the Rural Infrastructure Authority for the $1.25 million grant we received for construction. For the design build, bridge replacement package, the bridge at Deer Run Road is now closed for replacement and clearing began last week on the 23rd. For the Ashley River Park Connector, we have updated our design to meet Dorchester County Water Authority's clearance requirements for their 16-inch water main, and we are continuing to coordinate with CWS on the use of soil nails rather than piles within their edisto water tunnel easement. So once we get that finalized, we will move forward with 90% construction plans permitting and right-of-way acquisition. We hope to wrap that up by the end of the year so we can bid for construction in early 2026. For Ladsen Road streetscaping, Dominion expects to have their lighting plan completed by the end of this month, which is the last item we need to finalize the Jock contractors' estimate. And then pending no issues with that final estimate, we can move forward with preparing the task order and hopefully begin construction in September. For the Oakbrook Wayfinding signage, I followed up with the town today on their IGA that they are drafting for construction. So once we have that, we'll finalize that and all the big documents and prepare that for, for bidding. For Spring Road, construction continues, and the contractor has completed the cement-modified recycled base reclamation work. Construction is expected to be substantially complete in December of this year. As of right now, they're currently two months ahead of schedule, so we may see that getting completed much earlier. Maple Street widening, the construction completion date has been extended to March 3rd, 2026, due to utility relocation delays and additional work to include construction on Highway 78 to create a clear tie-in point with the 78 Phase 3A project. A third amendment to the IGA for that additional work on Highway 78 is on tonight's council agenda, and a lot of that is to make sure that, once we go to construction for Phase 3A, that there's no gaps or having to tear up newly constructed work from the Maple Street project. So the contractor has installed about 60% of the drainage on one side of Highway 78, and they expect an additional month to complete the drainage work in that area. For Sawmill Branch Trail Extension, we are finalizing the online public meeting materials and expect to post that information online for an online 30-day public comment period in late August. For SC 27 widening, the EDA requested that scope of the project be updated since a large water line relocation was no longer a part of the scope, which reduced the cost estimate of the project. We submitted the scope revision to EDA on July 10th and believe that that is the final item that they need for EDA approval, so fingers crossed. Hopefully, we can advertise next month. For US 78 Phase 3A, we were awarded, exciting news that you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, a build grant for construction, nearly $24.7 million, and we were the only award in the state this round for that grant. We are working with the COG and DOT to update the tip and STIP to reflect the updated funding, which needs to be in place before we can get bid authorization later this year. Value engineering workshop with DOT was held June 18th through 20th, and we'll be meeting with DOT's value engineering approval committee on August 8th to discuss which recommendations we'll move forward with. On US 78 Phase 3B, title opinions have been received for about half of the 99 impacted tracks, and the right-of-way agent has started staking the proposed right-of-way and meeting with property owners. For Central Avenue and Parsons Road improvements, the public comment period ended on July 10th. We received 110 comments, and we are working to review, summarize, and prepare responses to those comments. For Dorchester Road improvements, we held the public information meeting on July 15th, and we had over 400 folks that attended. The meeting materials are still posted online, and we'll be accepting public comments through August 15th. In the two weeks that we've, since the meeting, we've already received 95 comments online, so continuing to get that feedback from the public, which we encourage. For Delmar Highway improvements, the geotechnical fieldwork and environmental studies continue. For Linger Longer Drive- For Linger Longer Drive Extension, the engineering consultant is moving forward with right-of-way acquisition and final plan development. For Main Street improvements, the field survey and subsurface utility investigations are continuing and should be wrapping up within the next month. For Miles Jameson Road improvements, the consultant has drafted initial public meeting materials that we are starting to review. And our tentative public meeting date is November 6th at this point. For Orangeburg Loop, the consultant is starting to develop their public meeting displays. And we anticipate that the public meeting will be occurring in December before the, all the holidays and school lets out. For Stalsville Loop, we are gearing up for the public information meeting that we expect to be held in late September. The consultant is coordinating with the church on Limehouse Drive on potential dates. And you'll notice we've got a lot of public meetings coming up, but our goal is not to saturate the public with too many meetings. So our goal is to have once, one a month for the next probably year. For 17A Widening, environmental and field surveys continue as we work around DOT's safety project that's expected to wrap up in August. We're also evaluating the extension of the project limits to begin at Luden Drive rather than Green Wave Boulevard due to the opening of the Berlin G-Virus Parkway. For West Scott Boulevard, the engineering consultant is revising the preliminary plans based on feedback from the city of North Charleston. We're shooting for the week of October 6th to hold that public information meeting. For Patriot Boulevard, this is up for council. Authorization tonight is an IGA for cost sharing to complete the design and permitting work from West Scott Boulevard to Weber Boulevard. And that's, project's already 70% complete that the city had started. So under the IGA, the city will manage the project through design completion and then the project will be turned over to the county for bidding and construction management. And then lastly, Fairfield Road Paving, the construction notice to proceed was on July 1st. And the contractor is working with the utilities to get them relocated so they can begin clearing.
So I noticed that there's signs around the county that are still up even after we've held public meetings. And I think you've explained that you keep those signs up for an additional 30 days so people will have access to the website if they're driving past the signs so they can continue to comment through those 30 days, is that the case?
Yes, sir. We'll take them down after the 15th of August when the comment period is done.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to commend you on a job well done for the public meeting for Dorchester Road. It, it went really well and there are a lot of constituents there. And it just shows how much interest everybody has in giving the opportunity to express their opinions. It's, it was really good.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna agree with Council, Council on Rank. That was, that was an unbelievable turnout and you guys did an awesome job with that. There was a whole lot of interest in that, in that meeting for sure and can't wait to break ground on that one.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I mean, Sunshine, great job. What I'm hearing from you that we need to relay to everyone is we're getting ready to have a whole lot of orange barrels around Dorchester County. A lot of different places because we're doing a lot of engineering permitting right now and getting ready to start turning some dirt. So that's gonna be an exciting thing. Once it's done, it's just gonna be a little bit of a headache.
Yes.
In some places between that. Quick question on the Ladsen streetscaping. With what we saw with Dorchester Road at the public hearing, is that streetscaping in any way in danger of being adversely affected with any of the project alternatives?
No.
That we're looking at?
No.
Okay.
They start farther and I think a couple blocks in, so there, there won't be any report there.
All right. And then the second thing on the pedestrian bridge underneath Bacon's Bridge, I just heard you mention about Dorchester County Water Authority requiring us to be able to avoid their 16-inch line. Now, is, are they, is what they're asking within expected scope of what we would typically do or is that something?
Yes, yes, and we've already coordinated with them and what we're proposing now is, meets their requirements.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
I think, Mr. Byers, that those of us that were here when Dorchester Road was going from two lanes to four lanes, there were a lot of orange barrels and a lot of complaints. And, and the minute all those orange barrels went away, the, the, I sort of say the complaints went away, but that may not be true. But at least complaints about the orange barrels actually did go away, so.
Yes. And can I put in an advance request that we actually make sure that we put in the right sub-base that doesn't fail within the construction period itself? That would be phenomenal.
We'll make sure of that.
Okay. No more repeats of 2014.
Here, here. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, good evening, council.
Good evening.
July 28th, 1958. In response to the Soviet Union's October 4th, 1957 launch of the first artificial satellite, Sputnik, council passed the National Aeronautics and Space Act, creating NASA, which paved the way for US domination in space exploration.
Please, please.
So, let's get to the projects. Second phase of Stratton and Barrett Street rehab, contractors completed the installation and testing of 1,672 feet of 8-inch water line. We've got a partial PTO that would be requested once we receive our final record drawings. The contractor will then start connecting all the service connections. Phases one and two of Stratton 2 have both been awarded CDBG grants. Phase one documents have been sent for procurement to advertise for bids. Phase two is waiting on a notice proceed from the CDBG. Dorchester Regional Water Interconnection, you might have noticed if you drive down 78 or even in the neighborhood of Campbell Thicket, there's blue pipe everywhere. We have awarded that, that project to James Peterson at a cost of $7,671,825. Contract has been executed, notice proceed was issued for start date of July 7th. The contractor started clearing easements and installing pipe. Phase one consists of pipe starting at the Ridgeville Water Tank, installation along Campbell Thicket, and tying into a developer line that's being installed along Givens Road. If you, if you actually notice, all the directional drills along 78 have been complete. He's racing down Campbell Thicket as we speak. That project will probably come in early because he seems to be motivated. For DSS, the pump station for Force Main, the Phase one work is underway. Pipeline installation expected began last week in August. That's due to a delay in plug valves that is a small supply chain issue with that. For the Phase two Division one, pump stations have been awarded to Level Utilities, cost of $5,939,559. Both contracts have been executed, notice proceeds have been issued for, will be issued for August 11th, 2025. Hollyville Pump Station and Force Main reversal, that project is at a 6% milestone permits middleism process. From Highway 15 to the 26 interchange, we're also at 6%, design and permits have been submitted, have been submitted. For the Highway 178 water line extension, bid was opened back in June of 12th. Low bid was CBG with a total contract price of $1,857,774. Waiting on contract execution and the contractor is right, currently working on the submissions. Another project that's underway. At the Lower Dorchester Expansion Project, we have hit 46.5% completion. The concrete and form activities are reaching their completion at the UV affluent distribution box, thickening building, maintenance building, pre-treatment facility. They're working to install the, the maintenance building roof, wall panels are ongoing. And the contractor is working to install electrical to the buildings and install equipment. That's, a project is also racing through. Maple Street relocates, the final walkthrough was performed June 25th. Items were identified and given to the contractor for repair and for punchless. PKN tree site extension, project is advertised June 30th. Bid opening is scheduled for the 5th of August. And we'll give you a report on what the status of that bid was. Pump Station 72, Ashley River Upgrade, contractors installed a perimeter fencing, working to complete site restoration. We'll do a final inspection of that pump station this week. So we're getting ready to close that out. If you haven't noticed, you cannot miss it, it's, it's a site. For Pump Station 10, Force Main Replacement, design engineer has submitted their 60% plans. Projects consist of 9,800 linear feet of 8-inch line. We're converting that from an 8-inch to a 10-inch adjacent to Orangeburg Road. We've got a right-of-way agent engaged, initial contact letters have been sent out to the landlords and we're requesting appraisals. That's another project on Orangeburg Road that you will probably be contacted about because not only orange barrels, but just the digging activities that will be occurring. For Pump Station 20, Force Main Redversion, project was awarded to BRW Construction Group with a bid of $2,878,984. Executed that contract on the 16th of this month, had, held a pre-construction meeting and we're working to assign the notice proceeds very soon. Reevesville Waterline Upgrades, we're performing some additional flow tests and verification of these existing valves so that we know that our design is valid, just to check. For Shady Grove, 178 Area Pump Station, Force Main, that project has reached our 85% milestone. Summer Haven Water Line Improvements, we are at a 6% design, trying to complete the easement exhibits. Sweet Prior Subdivision Sewer Line Extension, got a few public pinch lines items, trying to complete it before project closeout. We've got a PTO, the residents now can get their connections into that line. For the Water Main Extension to the Career School and Technology Center, we've got a PTO permitted to operate there. We were just waiting on the schools to connect into the system, the waters there waiting for them. And for finally, Wyndwood Street Project Contractor is working to close out the projects. We are celebrating that fact. Site restoration's ongoing, we're working to attain a small additional easement at Hot Spot because the pipeline is just slightly out of the easement. So we're just acquiring that to make sure it's all done. And with that, yes, sir.
The Poplar Grove to Red Top Construction.
Did I miss that? I must have missed that.
You have to go through the whole thing all over again, sir.
Okay, no, but I can give you that off the top of my head. Poplar Grove to Red Top, that is actually, we've actually awarded the contract. The contractor has mobilized, we'll start pipe installation next week for that.
Very good. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is county administrator's time, Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and Council, I have several items for your consideration. First item is the third reading regarding an ordinance number 25-14, an ordinance to amend Dorchester County Zoning and Land Development Standards Ordinance number 0413, it's previously amended. With respect to Article 6, Use Group 14, Business Personal Services to Article 7, Section 7.1.2, 7.2.2, 7.3.2, 7.4.2, 7.5.3, 7.6.3, 7.7.3, 7.8.3, and 7.13.3, all titled permitted use groups. And to Section 7.6.11, Use Performance Standards to Article 8, Sections 8.2.8.1.2, 8.2.2 permitted uses to Article 9, Sections 9.1.2 and 9.3.2 permitted uses. And to Article 25, Definitions of Terms Used in this ordinance with the purpose of this amendment to separate childcare centers out as their own use groups and establish those within the appropriate zoning districts. I'll ask for third and final reading as recommended.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? I'm gonna give you a little bit of discussion that nobody was probably expecting, maybe, maybe Mr. Byers at the end down there. Jay and I last week, three days last week spent in, in DC. First day, we actually were at the Pentagon with Chief of Staff of the Air Force. And, and one of the concerns that the Air Force has in the Low Country, they mentioned very specifically, and it was childcare. And that availability of getting childcare. And then amazingly, the, on Thursday, we met with one of the admirals at St. Catherine's with the US Coast Guard who kind of told us, I guess it's, didn't say it was a secret, but ultimately that Charleston would become considered a super, that Charleston area would become a super base for the US Coast Guard. With what they are doing here and what they have forecast with a, with a PX and dormitories and new gates and everything else down there at what, rehabbing Pier Papa, and I think November's already done. And so again, all of these things being said, childcare was also what he mentioned from that standpoint. When you look at the size of that contingent from the Coast Guard in this area, seems rather minor that we are making a change to a county zoning ordinance like this. But it's much bigger than probably anybody ever thought about when we started it, so.
I believe the Coast Guard, I believe that was their number one primary concern was being able to do that. So, and you'd mentioned some of the other counties could look at doing what we're doing to try to make it easier for daycares because we certainly are short on that, so.
That is a region-wide problem? It's regional. It's not, it's not.
Wow.
And the, and the, the US, obviously Coast Guard is Treasury, not Department of Defense. But, but when you look at that DOD, clearly from their conversation and their ability to provide childcare for the airmen here and, and I guess some, some of the Navy personnel here, is still limited by the, what they have available, what they can actually do. So again, this, on the surface, a lot of people will think, you know, why are they doing that? But this ultimately is gonna allow folks to put some daycares in areas that are, are ordinances prior to prohibiting that or, or made it more challenging to get into. So that, probably didn't start out thinking that, but that's all I could think about when they, when they, when the Chief of Staff of the Air Force sits there and you see the five, the four stars on his chest and he tells you, and the word childcare comes out of your mouth, the first thing I thought about was the ordinance.
You know, and, and the Housing Services Director, that's pretty much, that, she said that she had called two national daycare companies trying to get them to come and provide services and they couldn't make the math math. And so this makes it easier for making the math math for, for these businesses to be able to open up and be able to do that. So that was certainly something that they were very concerned about. They were excited about the base, but this was a, this was a concern.
Certainly. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor? We are unanimous, Mr. Ward.
So, next item I have for your consideration is first reading and referral to the Planning, Development, and Building Committee for Public Hearing Recommendation Regarding Rezoning Request Number 933 for Charles Altman to rezone 33.94 acres located on Highway 178 near St. George. TMS number 007000069 from General Commercial District CG to Commercial Light Industrial District CLI. Ask for first reading and referral.
So move. There is a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Or unanimous?
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of maintenance acceptance application for Timothy Lake's Phases one and two roads and recommendation to begin the 12-month maintenance warranty period. The roads have been inspected and the recommendation is to begin that 12-month maintenance warranty period upon acceptance.
So move.
Second.
There is a motion and multiple seconds, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of the Public Works Department reorganization. It will consist of eliminating positions as well as establishing a deputy director position as well as crew supervisors. This will assist us in improving accountability and I ask for your approval.
So move.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? I, I'm, I'm gonna add, add that based on the discussion that I had with Mr. Ward when we were setting the agenda. And this comes from our new Public Works Director, this is an easy one to say yes to.
Are you supporting it then?
She's the author.
All in favor? Or unanimous?
As it relates to that, the next is a request for approval to amend the Human Resources Policy Manual to add positions to the home garaging and vehicle allowance list. And I will ask that you approve this with the understanding that we would add to the vehicle list a deputy director of public works, the transportation development manager and solid waste superintendent. And then add to the list for allowance the deputy director of economic development. We are deleting positions as well that I will not enumerate, but I will ask for your approval.
So move. There is a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of the Third Amendment to the Cooperative Intergovernmental Agreement between Town of Somerville and Dorchester County, South Carolina regarding the Maple Street Extension. Our recommendation is that county council approve additional funding of five hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred and two dollars and fifteen cents. This is directly related to the Dorchester County Water and Sewer Force Main relocation work. That is the county's responsibility as well as the aforementioned additional design, construction and time extension related to the U S Highway seventy-eight Phase Three widening project where it intersects with Maple Street, which will help us to avoid literally tearing up a portion of the Maple Street project when we come through with the Highway seventy-eight Phase Three project. Ask for your approval was recommended.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, I should, I guess I should have, was there any discussion? I'm.
Mr. Chairman, just a question for Mr. Ward. Is this funding just a single source or is it multiple sources?
So, this is single source funding. But I think it's important to note that of the approximately eighty-one million dollars that is the U S Highway seventy-eight Phase Three A project, as has been mentioned, we've now been able to obtain approximately twenty-four point seven million through that bill grant. And we're also looking at other cost savings associated with that project.
Nice. Thank you.
So now, I'm gonna ask one more time. Any more, any other discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous, Mr. Ward.
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Dorchester County and the town of St. George, South Carolina for traffic impact analysis, road maintenance management review and stormwater management review. Ask for your approval was recommended.
So move.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? And I'm just gonna kind of, this item I know, I'm, I'm not sure if, if you've received the weekly phone calls or emails in regards to this, this item basically. As I have, this sort of is, and, and I think we addressed this. I know initially I met with Mayor Hart and we had the discussion about this. What, what the ask was initially was much greater. But ultimately, it was something that we don't even do ourselves, that ask. So ultimately, the agreement was that we would help coordinate a third party in, in most of these instances. Because again, I believe we use third parties in, in these instances for, for some of this, this technical jargon that I'm not gonna get into because I don't understand it either. So, but, but in any case, that, that's what the purpose of this. Hopefully those, if you have been getting those phone calls and, and emails, this will address that at least at some level. So, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Or unanimous?
Chairman and council, the final item I have for your consideration. And I'm glad to state that we now have the sufficient signatures demonstrating the percentage of low to moderate income residents that would make us eligible is a request for approval to file an application to the South Carolina Department of Commerce in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a community development block grant. This funding would be used under their community enrichment program for a sidewalk improvement project. This would be phase one within the Dorchester Manor Community Census Track zero one zero eight one eight on our before August fifteen twenty-five. So I ask for your authorization for us to submit this application.
So move.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda are appointments to boards and commissions.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Donald West to the procurement appeals board.
So move. There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm full.
Mr. Byers.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Ryan Gorski to the Board of Disabilities and Special Needs.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that all my boards are now completely filled.
Well, this is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Maybe just a jump and I won't get, so there are.
If I'm not mistaken, she stole one from me.
Hey, I just filled my last.
At, 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 unfilled at least. And this is a huge plus, quite honestly, because I'm gonna say this out loud. Everybody wants to know how they can get involved until we say, hey, you wanna serve on this committee? And that's when everybody's hands go back down again. So that is, sometimes that commitment is more than people can, and, and I understand that. We have a, a single accommodations, no, we have two accommodations tax advisory committee positions that are open. Actually, I'm sorry, we have three accommodations tax advisory committee positions that are open and one Board of Assessment Appeals. So, other than that.
Well, the accommodation taxes, there, aren't there some criteria for qualifying for that?
There are.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, so, so one of them is, and I, good, good, good point. So one of the positions is hospitality position. So accommodations tax advisory committee, someone in the hospitality industry. And the other one actually is an at-large position. So, that one should be a little bit simpler to fill. If anybody knows of anybody, reach out to the clerk. I'm sure she will be happy to forward that information. All right. Let's see what I have. Next item on the agenda is county attorney's time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point in time, I have one item. That being the approval and authorization for the administrator to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Charleston and Dorchester County regarding the widening of Patriot Boulevard. I would request council's authorization of the administrator to execute that document.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Or unanimous? Are there any other motions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add executive session to discuss a contractual matter pertaining to the county attorney.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, one more, sorry about that.
You have enough.
Yes, I further move that, and you, you beat me to the punch. But I further move that county council go into executive session. I'm thinking you have the prerogative to do that. Is that, having done it, but. Thank you. And, yes, sir. So I'll move that county council go into executive session to discuss a contractual matter pertaining to the county attorney.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are. In executive session. And if you choose to stay, we will be back probably sooner than we are in most executive sessions. But if not, we hope you drive safe home. Thanks for coming out tonight. And we mean that, we really do.